All right, showtime. All right.
When you leave your report.
Good evening. The March Board of Education meeting is now called to order. May we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Shire, will you lead us in our meditation?
Heavenly Father, you have promised with two or three together, together in thy name, you'll be in the midst of them and bless them. Lord, I stand here humbly asking that you just give us discernment and that when we make these decisions, that it is betterment for the schools, the state, and our children. It'll be pleasing in your glory. In Jesus' name I pray, Lord, amen.
Amen. Okay, need a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
They're properly moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda approved. Now need a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
They're properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Recognitions, Dr. White.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we have a very special honor, and that is to honor our school board members. The North Carolina School Boards Association strives to offer board members up-to-date and relevant educational training opportunities. These trainings are professional development. They're around board roles, responsibilities, and it's so important for our board members to stay up-to-date on the recognitions. And as they do, they earn credit hours and special certificates of completion. And so tonight, we are honored to recognize some of our board members for completing the required monthly training hours. Okay? And these just gives you an outline of how the members qualifying for recognition, the total hours that they would get as they qualify. Many, many hours go into the professional development. And then the board as a whole can actually win the silver award, the gold award, or even higher. So our first certificate tonight is for Mr. Doug Baker, and he has earned between 31 and 100 credit hours. And he will be receiving the certificate of merit. Mr. Baker. You know, Ms. Sarah will get us. Our next certificate is for Ms. Abby Mason, and she is also receiving the certificate of merit for 31 to 100 hours. Next up, we have Ms. Purvis. And Ms. Purvis is receiving a certificate of achievement for having 101 to 200 credit hours. And then we have Mr. Gene Scott for receiving 900-plus hours. He is receiving the Scholars Circle, which is the highest award. 24 years on the Board of Education. Wow, 900-plus hours. And then we also, I do want to recognize Mr. Van Heath, who's not with us tonight, but a former member of our board. And I did want to announce that he also received the Scholars Circle Award, earning over 900 professional development hours.
Thank you, Dr. White. I do want to again recognize Mr. Gene Scott for his decades, what, three decades of service on the board and attending for the certification. And now we'll have Ms. Kim Lilly with our February Mentor of the Month.
Good evening. We are pleased to be able to announce our second month of our Mentor of the Month. Last month, we recognized two awesome educators in K-5 and also a 612 educator. Tonight, we would like to call forth two exceptional children's teachers. So Sarah Linkus, if she could come on forward, and then Robin Lloyd. So when we look at their mentors actually nominated them to be Mentor of the Month, and some categories we look at are their ability and their contribution to relationship building, content knowledge, planning support for their BT, providing feedback to their BT, being an advocate for their BT, and then professionalism. So I'd like to read a statement that Ms. Linkus' BT said about her. She said, "I would like to give a shout out to my angel. As an ECE teacher, in the first two years, let me tell you, the struggle is real. But with the support of my mentor, Sarah Linkus, ECE teacher at South Creek Elementary School, I can do hard things. Sarah has taught me so much. Sarah is always there when I need her, even with the overwhelming caseload. Sarah strives to do her best for her students every day. Sarah is an amazing advocate for my students and her students. We share our passion for always doing our best for our students. Sarah's presence is uplifting, even on our challenging days. Sarah can make anyone smile with stories about her chickens, her love for plants, her personal shopper, and her adoring family. Martin County Schools is blessed to have Sarah Linkus, and so am I." So we're really pleased that Sarah has supported her BT this year. Her BT is in year two. The pleasure to give you this recognition. So much like Sarah, Robin exudes those same qualities. Her mentee wrote, "I am a new teacher with no experience. My mentor has supported me in every way possible. She has never made me feel like a burden. She always greets me and tells me, 'You got it.' She believes in me more than I believe in myself at times. I can text her throughout the day, and she immediately replies, 'I'll be right there. What do you need? I'm on the way.' I don't care what obstacle I face, she helps me. She never teaches me things above my head, but in a way that I can understand, even if I have to ask a lot. If it was not for her, I would have already quit. I'm indebted to her, and I'm grateful that she makes time for me and makes me feel great." And I will tell you, Ms. Lloyd, when you go by there during your planning, Ms. Lloyd consistently has PLCs and PD in her room, not just for this mentee, but for several others. And they all said, "If it wasn't for Ms. Lloyd, I don't know that I'd come back." And the students had great things to say. So we thank you, Ms. Lloyd, for everything that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Lloyd and Ms. Linkus. Now, Dr. White, Superintendent's report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Purvis. So many wonderful things to celebrate during the month of February. First of all, we started out with National School Resource Officer Day. MCS is blessed to have school resource officers, and not one or two, or just our middle or high schools, but we have SROs in all of our schools. And we're very thankful for the awesome partnership we have with our local sheriff's office. They go above and beyond to support us. And so we spent the day celebrating our SROs in many different ways, from gifts to special letters from our students to even a school-wide assembly. And tonight, we just say thank you to our sheriff's office and thank you to each and every SRO that serves our schools. They're safer, better learning places because of you, and we are thankful for you. We also want to give a shout out to our school social workers. This week is National School Social Worker Week. We kicked off School Counselor Week and honored them in February. We are very blessed in MCS to have either a school counselor and/or social worker in every single school. That is something that we have restored in the last few years. And in every single school, we have a certified counselor and/or social worker. They go above and beyond for our children. Children can't learn until their needs are met. And our social workers and our counselors ensure that basic needs are met and that they are ready to learn and thrive, and we're truly blessed with the best. We also celebrated Love the Bus Week. Before children can learn, we must get them to school safely. And we cannot do that without our outstanding bus drivers. So throughout the month, on social media, we honored some of our bus drivers. And during Love the Bus Week, the week of Valentine's Day, every school did something every day to celebrate all of our bus driver heroes. We are so thankful for every single bus driver in Martin County Schools. It begins and ends with you every single day. And we could not do what we're doing for the children of Martin County without you. So thank you to our bus drivers. The good news keeps going as Martin County Schools Odyssey of the Mind wins big at regionals this year. Martin County Schools took six teams to the regional Odyssey of the Mind competition. Odyssey of the Mind is a problem-solving competition. Each year, they give you five problems. Each team chooses the one they want to solve. And they spend almost a year coming up with the most creative, out-of-the-box solution to this problem. It involves writing a script, building a set. I mean, you go in to see these students, they're working with power tools. They're using their imagi... They learn to sew. They spent weeks sewing their own costume. So when you think about hands-on learning, when you think about out-of-the-box, that's what Odyssey of the Mind is. And we are so proud to say that four of our six teams, this is only the second year we've ever done this now, four of our six teams are headed to the state championship this month, later on this month. So we are so proud of them. And I want to give a special shout out to our coaches. Ms. Kristy Stevens is the head of Odyssey of the Mind for Martin County Schools and does an absolutely phenomenal job fundraising for this event. They come in on Saturday. These children come to school on Saturday and are actually working on these projects on Saturday. We also had two parent coaches this year. Just phenomenal job by everyone. And special thank you to those adults for providing this fabulous opportunity for our children. Send us all your positive vibes, prayers, and goodwill as these children compete in the state championship on March 29th. If they advance there, they will go to the world finals, which will be held in Michigan this year. And last year, in our inaugural year of this, we did have a team advance to the world competition, which is something that, you know, was just a... Some teams don't do that the entire, or districts don't do that the entire time they participate. So we're very proud of that and looking forward to great things this year. Martin County Schools also announced their new football coach. Welcome to Mr. John Wheeler to Gator Nation. He has met the students, attended the basketball game last week, and he was at the basketball game already doing some great things at Martin County High School. And we are looking forward to a phenomenal upcoming football season. More good news for Martin County Schools, we had state finalists for the Junior Chef Competition. Martin County High School is home to one of only five teams statewide vying for the 2025 Junior Chef Competition. And it is just what it sounds like. There are certain rules and parameters that they have to follow in preparing a meal. We had several seniors that were able to advance to this level. And so proud to say that Martin County Schools has won a five-state finalist. And we will find out later this month, hopefully, that Martin County Schools is the champion of the junior state competition. We will keep you posted. And congratulations to Jasmine Robertson, Miley Harrington, and Ryan Whitley, who are all seniors at Martin County High School for representing us so well and doing such a wonderful job. Congratulations to our Martin County Schools cheerleaders. They did a wonderful job at the Cupid's Cup competition. Our coaches, shout out to Ms. Cynthia Morning and Ms. Raina Beach, took two teams, not one, but two. They took both JV and varsity, and both teams placed in the competition. And Ms. Raina shared with me that they were up against some competition, many teams who have been at this competition for many, many years. And this was our first time going. And our girls, of course, represented us well. So shout out to our Martin County Schools cheerleaders and to our coaching staff. Our boys' basketball continue with the great news as we are headed to the third round of the state playoffs. Martin County High School Gators will be at Southwest Onslow on Tuesday, March 4th, 6:30 p.m. If you plan to go, it's $7 cash. Congratulations to Coach Davis on a fabulous first season heading into the third round of the state playoffs. Listen to all of our prayers and well wishes as they take on Onslow tomorrow. We held our first Martin County High School mid-year graduation last month as well. Congratulations to all of our mid-year graduates. We are so proud. We had 26 mid-year graduates, 18 that participated in the mid-year graduation ceremony. We're so proud of them and looking forward to the amazing things that they are going to do in life. We hosted one of the best nights of the school year, which was Fall in Love with Martin. We came to the Innovation Campus, and we showed our families and community members why and how Martin offers more. We showed them our biomedical engineering. We showed them every single elementary school, middle school, and high school. We showed them our animal science program. We showed them our veterinary science program. We showed them reason after reason that Martin offers more pre-kindergarten through 12th grade. It was one of the best events I feel like we have ever had. And I just want to give a shout out to all of our schools, our school administrators, our teachers, our Career and Technical Education Department, our high school. Just phenomenal job, the work that went into that night. And the... We had a fabulous turnout, right at 500 folks came out and participated. It was just absolutely wonderful. So great job to everybody. Martin truly does offer more, and this was a great way to show our community. Another first and another championship for Martin County Schools. This year, we had the inaugural implementation of Skills USA. Our MCS students, our Career and Technical Education students, participated in the Skills USA Eastern Regional Competition along with other schools from across the state. Skills USA offers a broad range of awesome competitions. And every one of our students that went and participated in the competition brought home a medal. First time ever our students have participated in this. And we even had one team, our Crime Scene Investigation, were actually the regional champions and took home first place. So congratulations to Mr. Nguyen, to everybody involved with this CTE Skills USA endeavor. We're so proud, and you represented us well. More good news for Martin County Schools, we are awarded a $250,000 safety grant. There's nothing more important than safety. And so we were, we did just found out last week that we were awarded $250,000 to upgrade safety across all of our schools, from everything to certain professional developments, training on bullying and trauma, to provide an online therapy options for our students. Great things coming to Martin County Schools. In the month of February, we celebrated Black History Month. And no matter where you went across the district, you saw great things happening, from special projects and writing activities at Rogers Elementary Schools to our chorus performing a Black History program at Riverside Middle School, to a wax museum at E.J. Hayes, a special assembly at South Creek Elementary. The goodness goes on and on. And we are so excited and honored to celebrate Black History Month in the many different ways across Martin County Schools. It is time now to go into some of our information items. It's time to register for pre-K and kindergarten. So that information is on our website, it's on our Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter. We need you to come out. If your child will be five or older before August 31st, they are eligible for kindergarten. March 5th from 12 to 7, and March 6th from 8 a.m. to 2 p.m., right here at the Innovation Campus. Bring out your rising kindergarteners. The first 100 families will receive a free coffee from Tom's Coffee Truck. They will be in the parking lot on Wednesday and Thursday. So please come on out. Let's get your child registered for kindergarten. We're excited to welcome them into our MCS family. Our Community Coalition is on a roll. Our Community Coalition is established to bring our community together in order to move our community forward. We have three committees that are working right now. Our Emotional Well-being Committee, our Parent Involvement Committee, and our Youth Programs Committee. If you are a part, if you live in Martin County and would like to be a part of our coalition, please reach out. Ms. Stahl's email is here. You can also reach out to me. We would love to have you join this important work as we strive to come together and move our community forward. We do have several upcoming parent education sessions. Parent education means parent power. The more you know, the better you are able to offer for your children. So we are having two sessions coming up, a Drugs Uncovered Program, as well as a For the Health of It session for students. These are going to be coming up later this month on March 20th. More information's going to be publicized about these soon. But this is actually being put on by our Parent Involvement Committee as part of the Martin County Coalition. MCS is casting superstars. Martin County Schools will be hosting our own job fair coming up later this month on March 24th, right here at the Innovation Campus from 3 p.m. to 7 p.m. We are going to be looking for certified and non-certified positions. We're going to have people here on-site that will actually be able to talk to you more about the job that you may be interested in and possibly even hold interviews on the spot. So come to our very own Martin County Schools Job Fair. You don't have to register in advance, but you absolutely can. And the link is provided on our website and social media if you would like. We would love to see you come learn more about how you can be a part of our Martin County Schools family. The deadline has been extended for this special T-shirt contest. Our Special Olympics Committee has extended the deadline for the T-shirt design contest. And they will be accepting submissions all the way until this Friday. They are looking for a talented student to design this year's Special Olympics T-shirt. And we want that talented student to be right here in Martin County Schools. So students, parents, get your submissions in. All the details are here. It's also on our Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and website. Get those creative juices flowing, and let's have our students design the Special Olympics T-shirt that everyone will wear this year. Your child, your choice. The school choice window is open for '25, '26. We have school districts in Martin County. However, we also offer school choice. We want you to choose the school that's the right fit for your family. You may work in a different part of the community than you live. And we want you to decide which school is the right fit for your family. If you are a school choice candidate, meaning you would like to go to school outside your district, please fill out the school choice form. And we try to honor as many of those requests as we absolutely can. It's your child and your choice, and we want you to be at the school in Martin County that best fits the needs of your family. Get those in as soon as possible. And we've received big news this month as we close out the Superintendent's Report with this. Martin County Schools was selected as one of only two official early college high school recipients of 2025. Now you say, "Wait a minute, Dr. White, we already have an early college program." We actually absolutely do. We have an early college program. But we were selected as one of two high schools in the state of North Carolina to actually receive an early college high school. There were three initially put forth, but two were actually approved at the Community College State Board. And we are now in the final legislative process to receive Martin County Early College High School. What will be different? What will be different is that we will be fully funded for an early college, which means we can add programs. We've told you, if we don't have it, we will build it. This will allow us to even further expand our already expanded opportunities at Martin County High School with our Career and Technical Education. We have a full partnership with Martin Community College. We will actually be able to add new programs and expand based on the desires and wishes of our community, our family. If you have a business and you are looking for a home for your business, Martin County is the home for your business. We have county commissioners that are working to move this community forward. We have economic development moving this community forward. And we have Martin County Schools moving this community forward. Put your business here in Martin County, and Martin County Schools Early College will build your workforce. We will design curriculum around the business that you need, whether it be coding to plumbing to masonry, whatever it is, we can build your workforce. That's what this early college is going to do for Martin County and Martin County Schools. It's going to allow us to grow economically and be a huge catalyst for growth across the entire Martin County at large. So what do we need you to do? We need you writing your legislators. We need you letting them know what a big opportunity this is for Martin County community and for Martin County Schools, because this is life-changing for our students. They will be able to graduate with a two-year certificate, associate's degree, or transferable degree to a four-year university. It's the child's choice. Whatever they want, we will be able to offer that. So we're very excited about this opportunity. It's a big deal that out of the state of North Carolina, they picked Martin County Schools. That's a big deal. We're proud of that, and it's a testament to what we've been saying, Martin offers more. Come join our family and let us show you how. That concludes our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. White, and Martin offers more. So now we're moving to our information action items and ask Ms. Andrea Lilly if she will bring forth the board policy.
Good evening, board. In your board packet this week, we found 3,000 Series Part II policies and Part III policies. And those were 3,300, 3,400, 3,410, 3,420, 3,431, and 3,440. And for Part II, do you have any questions?
Any board members, any questions?
No.
No? Okay. And for Part III, we were looking at 3,510, 3,515, 3,520, 3,530, 3,565, and 3,610. Do y'all have any questions about Part III?
No, ma'am. You gave us a reading assignment.
Thank you. That is, that concludes the first read for those policies.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and move into the SRO?
Yes, ma'am. Our agreement with the Martin County Sheriff's Office is to employ eight full-time school resource officers, their supplies and equipment. And the school system agrees to reimburse Martin County Schools, Martin County Sheriff's Office for its expenses in providing the SRO program. Do y'all have any questions about this MOU?
Four. No, ma'am.
I ask for approval for that, please.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the SRO MOU? Got a motion? Got a... Second? They're properly moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the SRO MOU indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on along, Ms. Raina Beach, Summer Remediation Plan, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come for you tonight to ask for approval for the Summer Remediation Plan. The parameters of the Summer Remediation Plan include that they have to be, the remediation must be provided before we retest. Students can retake EOGs and EOCs except for 3rd grade. except for third-grade reading and science courses, because science courses are re norming this year as far as their testing. The retest score counts towards school performance grades, but not the student growth. And remediation and retesting must occur after the last day of school. So by having a summer remediation plan, we give our students the opportunity to remediate on some of the concepts that they may have not learned the first time. And also gives them an opportunity to retest in case they had a bad day the first time. So this is our plan. The instructional dates, the first semester of Math I and Math III will remediate on Monday, June 9th. And then we'll retest the next day. Because they don't need as many days to remediate, because they're having remediation throughout the year. All other subjects will have instructional days, Tuesday, June 10th through Monday, June 16th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And they will test on Tuesday, June 17th and Wednesday, June 18th. Transportation will be provided. And breakfast and lunch will also be served. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Raina? I have one question. Have we been successful with this model?
Yes, we did this last year. And I believe 90% of the scores that the subjects that we retested were increased.
Okay. And Mr. Barber's going to make sure our children are...
Yes.
Okay, board, and you need approval.
Yes.
Then we have a motion, board, to approve the Summer Remediation Plan.
Move the board.
Second. They're properly moved in second. For approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Amy... Oh, Ms. Amy Diddy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We posted a bid for intercoms for three different schools. Williamson Primary, Rogers, Janesville. We posted the bid. We had three companies submit a bid. This is the rubric that we use to grade the companies and the systems. They all were similar. All the companies are great. The three different systems are great. It basically came down to the cheapest price, which is good. So this is a tabulation sheet. So we had NC Sound, Tenex Consulting Group, and Brady Integrated Security. Brady Integrated Security came in at the lowest price for all three schools for a total of $297.522.8. And this will be paid for by the Stronger Connections Grant. So it is grant-funded. So it is my recommendation that we move forward with Brady Integrated Security with board approval.
Any questions, board, around intercom? Okay, then we entertain a motion for approval of the intercom system bid for Brady.
So move. Look.
They're properly moved in second to approve the intercom system bid for Brady. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kim Lilly, I Ready.
Good evening. I am here tonight to talk with you about our renewal for I Ready. This is our third year of renewing since I've been here. This is for next school year, for the '25-'26 school year. This is to renew our K-8 Universal Screener, which is what we give a diagnostic at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. And it's used to identify students that are at risk. And also, it sets them up with a personalized plan. So we're also purchasing that part so our K-8 students in ELA and math can also do that student plan. That is a certain pathway for them. Also, I want to mention too with the diagnostic, it's used with MTSS purposes, where you help, like I said, identify students at risk, but then it also helps you with interventions as well. Also, part of the quote is the toolbox, sorry, the teacher toolbox, which allows the teacher to use the interventions. And there's also standard line and standard mastery assessments that can be assigned as well. So this is going to be a district Title I funded purchase. And for next school year, for the whole year for K-8, it is $110,422.22. So I'm asking for approval for that. But first I'll open up if there are any questions.
Questions? All ready?
Just if they, if something happens with the amount of Title I money we give, is there a backup plan?
And we did have a planning meeting about a week ago. We met with Ms. Beach, federal programs. And we also met with Ms. Emily Centura. And we laid out all the different curriculum programs. Because the thing now, a lot of our curriculum programs have that electronic, that digital piece. So with the digital piece, you know, it's something we have to renew every year. And you know, it's not just buying a textbook and you've got it. So we did lay out, and we looked at all the different things, what you need to purchase each year for renewal. And everything that we laid in there has a spot. So this is one thing that Ms. Beach said we'd be able to pick up with federal programs. Great question.
Any other questions? Okay, then can we get a motion for the I Ready Universal Screener?
So move.
Second.
They're properly moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried for the I Ready.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Can we get a motion for closed session?
Madam Chair, the Martin County Board of Education will enter closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to NC General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information under GS 115C-39 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employer. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in NC General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and the NC General Statute 115C-402. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in NC General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Have a motion. Can we get a second for closed session?
So.
They're properly moved in second. And all in favor going into closed session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, closed session.
Personnel. Can we have a motion?
Motion, or breath. Second.
Been properly moved and seconded to approve personnel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carry. Need a motion for the closed minutes.
I move that we set the closed minutes and then keep them closed.
Got a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to approve the closed minutes and keep them closed. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Dr. White, did you want to do the announcements?
Just want to remind parents to please get their children to school. If you are sick, stay home, but if you are healthy, we need your babies in school so that they can get everything that we have for them. So please make sure you're on time. We have seen a slight uptick in tardies, so please be on time. Please get your kiddos to school every day because we want them to have the best and that requires them to be at school.
They got it, ma'am.
Okay.
Send it to me.
And please, we have on March the 13th, NCSBA lead training in Elizabeth City. On March the 17th is our regular work session and on March 27th through the 28th is our board retreat. Are there any other comments or announcements?
I would like to recognize Dr. White. This is Women's History Month and she made history, I think about two years ago, as our first female superintendent. So happy Women's History Month.
Thank you. And you made history as our first woman board chair, didn't you?
No ma'am.
You did?
No ma'am.
Was our first African American board chair.
No ma'am. I know you're trying for it.
I'm trying.
On the best you can.
That's public counsel.
I do also like, would like to recognize our board clerk because our board clerk has been doing continuous education and I think that she actually received a certificate of distinction. So that's, that's really, you know, so I would like to give her a share. And now, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move early.
Mr. Scott, please your behavior. We have a second. We're properly moved and seconded and this is controversial, so all those in favor of adjourned, please indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed. Motion carry.